April tenth, twenty twenty-three. This is Town and Brookfield Planning Board Monthly Meeting. Go through a roll call. I'm Tim Straz. Terry Ward. Terry McMenamy. Gus Strattan. Ed Ingles.
Here.
Rich Sacker.
Here.
We have no alternates to appoint. First order of business is to welcome Ed Ingles as a full member of the planning board. Welcome.
Glad to be here.
It's nice to have you here. Continuing on us after being an alternate. Excited to have another member. And the next order of business is elect officers for twenty twenty-three. We'll start with chairperson. Are any nominations for chair?
I'm gonna nominate Tim Straz to be re-elected.
Is there anybody else that would like to be chair? Seeing as the two of you. Hold on, I gotta do my encounting here. So Gus motioned for me. And second. There's nobody else that was going interested? No? Oh, who walks through the door? Hey, Gary, how are you?
Thanks, how are you?
Good. We're just going through our electing our officials for officers for twenty twenty-three.
Seven.
And Gus motioned for me to continue as chair, and Ed seconded it. I don't know if there's anybody else interested in being chair?
I mean, not around. I think you're safe.
All right, okay, I will accept the nomination there. Let's vote on it. All those in favor of appointing myself as chair for another year, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I am chair again. The next one, vice chair.
Who's it currently? Terry Ward?
Nope. John. John was the vice chair.
What does it entail?
We've kept it fairly minimal. It's usually when the chair is absent.
You would run the person.
The person would run. Gary, you interested?
I was just gonna say, I was gonna nominate you.
I was gonna nominate you. This sounds like last year. It was Terry and John.
Gus, you interested?
No.
I vote when I'm retired, I'll be able to do it.
So this is standoff.
You can nominate me.
Okay, great, mine nominated. There you go.
I don't think I can second my own nomination though.
I think they'll be great at it.
I'll second it. Anybody else wanna be? Nope. All right, any discussion? Nope. Let's vote. All those in favor of Ed being our vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome, vice chair.
When do you retire, Rick?
Gosh, I wish so.
Moving up pretty quickly.
Public comment? See, no. Public comment, we'll move on. Not since Chris won't spill, we have none. Review and a possible approval of minutes from March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'll make the motion to accept the minutes with one edit for Marshall's first name. Any discussion? Nope. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Gary was not, she was absent last month.
Can we give a copy of the correct? Does the meeting minutes want to be approved?
Yeah, well, I have, yeah, I will. I gave them all last year, I came in January.
Okay, we can.
Last month.
Door shut block.
Yeah, I gave it last month, I gave them.
Thank you.
Yep. And I, yes. So let's move to old business. Gravel pit reclamation plans. John was championing that one, but I don't think we have any update this month.
Well, I'll jump ahead.
Okay, well, that's what I was gonna say, daily table list for our next item, which is the RSA one fifty-five E.
Yes, and I called the person down in O.S.I.
Yep.
Had a discussion about how we get smart and gravel pit regulations. Well, it's all on one fifty-five E. You just have to read that and understand that.
Oh, that's nice.
But then I asked her the question about gravel pits. I said, tell me about gravel pits. Can they be grandfathered? Absolutely not. I said, oh, that's interesting. And she coached us to be aggressive, which was saying, don't let these gravel pit people do things that they really shouldn't be doing. And just tell them we need a reclamation plan. If they don't have one, create one.
Yep.
So I thought that was interesting. Oh, there, there's a one fifty-five E discussion.
Yeah.
Yes. And if they don't do that, what?
I guess we can shut them down. I guess you give a cease and desist. You know, I started asking, can you make them dumps? Can you bring in stumps? Can you bring in organic material? And now we got the legal opinions, and she backed off right away. You gotta talk to your town attorney to see what, but allowed, not allowed.
So do we, what do you think would be wise next step? Should we have a consultation with the town attorney about this matter?
Education is never bad. The best way to get educated, most effective. She's two fifty an hour a week. I mean, money's okay, we learn something.
Yeah.
Something, get a Zoom meeting going.
Yeah.
Might be.
Well, she came and visited us last year in April, and I think that was very beneficial.
Yes, it was. That's what the word wants. We can set something up on your word.
I think we, I mean, I thought we got a lot out of last year's visit with her. I mean, I learned a lot.
Yes, yeah. We would have to have a decent list of questions for her ahead of time. So why don't I do this? Why don't I start a discussion with her about this? About coming to visit us and having a discussion about gravel pit?
Yeah, it suggests a problem, right? We don't understand the law, what we have to do. So that would do it. I wouldn't give her a solution, I'd say.
So the question I'm gonna need comes, what kind of questions? Oh, yes.
Point of order, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did the pit owners give you the new reclamation plans?
No.
There is a method you could use, it is a cease and desist. The select man has the authority to do that and cease operation of that pit until you have that reclamation plan, because that is in the law. It must be in place and here to. Since it is not existing right now, I think you'd have the authority to stop the operation of the gravel pit. That should get their attention in order to get your plans.
Yes.
Thank you for taking my comment.
You're welcome. Thank you. I think we have some work to do before we just take that kind of stance.
That's exactly right. We have to understand, what's the process?
Just because I do believe that the grandfathering thing is a hot topic, that if we don't fully understand what that means, then we are, can't have a safe discussion or take a position, rather. We all agree with this?
Yes.
Yeah. So I'm gonna just quickly, a couple items. So grandfathering, reclamation plans. I'm just writing down some items to kind of cast towards her when I communicate with her about meeting, grandfather reclamation plans, bringing in organic matter, is that the other?
Yeah, that's what we stopped, right? That's what I understand people are dropping in the pits.
Okay. Any other items you think of that you'd like to put as a question?
To consult the attorney about?
Yes, for the gravel pits.
Just what our recourse would be if we don't get what we need?
And if we're making a list, you know, as you Gus raised, what's with this legislation that might be coming in? So what's the impact? You may not pass, but.
That's a separate item.
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right. I will put that together in a minute. Let's move on to the multifamily discussion. So last month, we were talking about ADUs and potential for multifamily housing on a lot. We decided we would table ADU part until we, or solve the election, which that has happened, and we've updated our zoning. And the discussion was, are we required to have multifamily? Are they allowed? For my notes.
I believe they're allowed.
It wasn't clear in the Warren article whether multifamily would be included, was it?
No, but it's in the zoning already. We've got, we have workforce housing, we had to specify years ago where we'd be permitted. So there's a couple of sections in there saying you could put workforce housing. Try to describe what it looks like. It's high density, it's more than duplexes, it can be duplexes, it could be, it could be a apartment. In the state report, we hinted to find areas for that. And I thought it was one oh nine, but after the discussion last week, Shorette said it's on Moose Mountain also. Yeah, so I guess there's, we'll look at our maps to see where it actually is. And you need a developer, you need someone that wants to do it, make money out of it. The town's not included. Can you see it there?
Yeah.
Yep, it's up Moose Mountain Road and tumble down dick, Governor's Road, Governor's Road.
Is that private or private town? Private, yeah. Have the owners expressed any interest in developing it?
Not that I know of.
So why did this get raised with the ADU conversation?
Because people didn't recognize that we permitted multifamily housing in town. They thought we were limited to ADUs, and we have zoning for multifamily.
But I think so, but I think that it's easy for the two to get confused because they're in town, also they have to be, ADUs have to be physically attached, right? So isn't the conversation is to try to talk about allowing, permitting whatever ADUs that are detached, especially in town where there's, you know, X amount of acreage? Because other towns, it's permitted. So that was an issue. So that's why I was just wondering about the multifamily, why that even came up?
Would you see there anything to say? I was gonna wait to get the lead.
Appendix B has architectural insight design standards for multifamily workforce housing.
Which is multifamily, right?
Yeah. And Appendix C has workforce housing requirements, which the first line is multifamily and single-family workforce dwellings are not permitted in area RA1 and RE1. These areas are designated for protection or conservation of the natural resource inventory.
So what's the differential between a multifamily and an ADU? ADU messed up a shared space or some sort of shared utility?
Shared inside door.
Shared inside door. Where is a multifamily?
Duplex, floor.
Okay.
So the front door is only, it can only go into RA two, is that right?
That's right, yeah. Because that's most of the town, I believe.
You have to check RSA six seventy-four fifty-eight two for the definition of multifamily dwelling.
That's what we say.
Tim, what number we said again?
Six seven four fifty-eight.
Okay.
Two, section two. But we have our standards, which multifamily workforce housing should meet following standards. It's permitted on a lot of five acres or greater with a minimum of two hundred and fifty feet of road frontage on state-maintained road with all structures and parking areas within five hundred feet of the road. There should be no more than one unit per half-acre lot size. Multifamily workforce dwellings shall be set back hundred feet from public right-of-way. Four-year vegetation upper, body rear inside lot lines, twenty-five foot stuff, or furniture.
You said state-maintained road?
Gus has. Yes.
It's governors of one oh nine.
Yes, and part of Lyfer.
Yes.
Is Lyfer a state road?
A heart, where they double ended on the road.
Right up until Clark?
Yep. Yep. So even though we say it's the whole town, it's not the whole town with that qualification?
Yeah.
It's also, I just kind of read it quickly, but it seems like there's multifamily and there's workforce, and we call it multifamily workforce?
We do.
So we haven't really addressed multifamily per se, only workforce housing, which has affordability.
Yes, yes. Yes. We're saying, see if that's. Multifamily housing for the purpose of workforce housing development, excuse me, developments, means a building or structure containing five or more dwelling units, each designed for occupancy by individual household.
General.
Yeah.
Why not more?
So by definition, multifamily housing is workforce housing.
I didn't get that from that.
You didn't get that from that?
What's that? I still don't think it addresses multifamily that's not workforce housing, because workforce requires affordability part. So can you have a multifamily that doesn't have affordability requirements?
Does not appear to be. I don't know. It's a good question.
It's not the zoning, I don't think. I mean, I've read through everything here.
Well, no, I think our zoning, it only pertains to workforce and single-family households on a lot.
So if this sixty acres across the street here, they would have put a multifamily. They could put a three-family dwelling over there.
Yeah.
It's not zoning, right?
Right.
So when it says workforce, what? I mean, is that, I mean, I know what that term means, but does that mean that there's housing provided for people that are gonna work on that land?
No, no. So workforce housing definition is a single-family and multifamily dwellings, which are affordable through sale or rent to households that meet specific income requirements stated in six seventy-four fifty-eight. Six seventy-four low income.
The fifth point, I think, is you get a nice, very nice apartment buildings.
Oh, yeah.
And a lot workforce, right?
Trump Tower.
Yeah, whatever. There's plenty of language. And that's not.
It's a loophole.
Yeah.
But on all this, it's an opportunity, right?
We need to tighten that up.
So would you like me to add this to my, to the list for my email?
Yes. For our meeting, we need her to come again.
So the question would be multifamily that's not workforce housing.
And can our zoning limit it to state roads or whatever? All right. Because I think the way it is now, Rich, like the new house down by you.
Yeah.
They could have put up two side-by-side townhouses, assuming they had all the other, you know, five acres and two fifty frontage and all that. Or any new lot, anywhere could have that.
Well, not anymore.
We don't address multifamily, though. Why can't you put up two townhouses next to each other on any lot that qualifies under everything else? Two acres, five acres, furniture, all that.
Well, because we call for single-family dwellings.
So there are two of them.
Two single-family dwellings?
Separate units, you don't remember.
But connected.
Like a dual.
Connected.
They're tethered, they're tethered, like you would find, you know, in the city.
We shall ask?
Workforce and no workforce, you know. The workforce, you probably get around with the affordability thing, because nobody's gonna build anything new with that low rent, at least right now.
So a building lot requirement, the dwellings, no more than one dwelling shall be allowed on any existing or nearly set by a lot, regardless of the size of the lot. Each dwelling units have a foundational structure with a minimum of four foot of frost wall. Okay. So that gets added.
I'm trying to dovetail this in under C. We've got all this land north of us in town, big, big undeveloped parcels. Down here is pretty well developed, down to five, ten acre lots, small lots. When you start running up Clark or Barney or Tibbetts Hill or Stone, there is major acreage up there, and it could all become, a lot of furniture, and it all can become two-acre lots. What do we want to do with that? I mean, some of that land is just, there's some views up there, you see the whole Mount Washington range. And I would think that we'd like to influence the type of development that goes on there. Maybe we can talk about that in the board this year. What do we want up there? Given that our master plan says try to keep it rural. Down here, it's generally developed. It really is. It's not schlep, it'd be something like that, but up north, there's just acres and acres. It's gonna go on the market soon.
It's going to.
Oh, I think so. People are getting old, and the kids don't live there anymore.
The town needs to get with the trust and conserve all that land.
It's all the curry use that would do tax dollars on it today, generally. All right. Something to discuss this year.
Next item, master plan. I have not had a chance to do any work on that, so I will make that, will continue for next one. New business, rules and procedure process for a corrected plot map.
And if an RSA were, we have to get one till we're okay, get striking. If there's an RSA that says that if a plot changes, the town is obligated to get a copy from the surveyor.
Okay.
So we'll do it.
The next one is review amended zoning ordinance for submission. So I went through and highlighted what I sent the board members. I highlighted in yellow with exception of the removal of our. I came from the left, I had. Removal of our section regarding what's permissible. Oh, we have Article two, two, and Appendix E. So I removed the references to non-permitted uses. So I took everything that we had worked on, updated everything. We've gone from, went down to forty-seven pages. We were at fifty-five two years ago, so it's shrinking, but did everybody have a chance to look at it and review and see whether or not I missed anything?
I have a question on the witness section there.
Yes.
Did we want to include something about the state? It basically says, provided they comply with the ordinance provisions regarding, right, and all that?
Yes.
So we want to also add something along the lines that, you know, that any state requirements would override? Or, you know, in conjunction with other state requirements or something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
We had, did we have the RSA number for that? Did you have that? HB ten twenty-one.
Oh, yes. But that should have been come in RSA. See if we can do a quick search here. RSA 72233. 72, 674, 76. So it's either 674 or 76, since we don't have a new book if we don't have it. Or 72, 72 we don't have. It would probably be in the 674 section, because that's the, that ain't what section. So let me just confirm that 674, 76 is correct. And we'll just put in parentheses per RSA 674... 674, 76. I'll confirm that it's the correct RSA.
Religious use of land of structures.
Yeah. Is that it? That's correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other items that folks saw or had comments or questions on? Anybody want to make the motion to accept it with... Well, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to accept our updated zoning ordinance with the revision for Article 3K. As updated, I guess.
As approved by the...
As approved by town, yes, thank you. We have a second.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the new zoning ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, now we have to sign it. The next step after we sign it is to have it stamped by the town clerk and then it's all set. Do you have a blue pen here? I have one in my hand.
Will you sign the copies that we brought in?
No, we're just going to sign this master.
Oh, okay.
I can't remember if we signed and then printed or we just signed.
We'll see. Just sign.
Blue, it's going to be blue. Do you have two of yours?
I think that might be mine.
Yours is what?
I think that was blue.
It isn't blue. The copies are so good now, they can't tell originals from copies. That's why they won't blue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what do you plan to do with that? You're going to get, see?
I'm going to go see Karen and get her to stamp it, then I will scan this page, add it to the digital document, PDF, post it to the town website, then I have to see about getting it to OSI into the Carroll County, County Office. All right, thank you. Any member comments?
Yes, I got that.
Yes, you have a few.
The notice on the bottom of your agenda.
Yes.
We've put all our, I think we've put all our postings now on the website and the bulletin board.
Yes.
The first sentence, you might want to strike that first sentence on the bottom of the palace.
I've had twice.
Well, one, two, three, go to Grand Avenue.
I, I, I...
Oh, is there one? Well, it still has to be correct a little bit, right?
Yeah, so you want to strike?
We do the website?
Yep.
And the bulletin board, yes.
Okay, so it's not published in the paper anymore?
No more, that's right.
Public hearings aren't published in the paper anymore?
No more. Two sites, it's his turn.
It does say it may be published, it doesn't say it will be published.
It's not a shall.
Okay.
And the other comment was, what are we going to do for the roster? Are you going to do that offline later or?
Yes, I'll take care of the roster.
Okay.
Any other member comments? All right, seeing none. The next meeting is May 8th. Anything else?
7:38.